I'd like to call our June 16th Board of Regular Schedule Board meeting to order. If you would please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Your heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day that you've given us. God, we thank you for our health. We thank you, God, with many blessings of life. God, we pray for the troubles, Lord, across our country. God, we ask, Lord, that you'd help us as a board in all decisions, Lord, that we made. God, we pray that you'd lead us, guide us, and direct us. We ask these favors in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next I'll hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion is second by Mr. Blunt. All those in favor? Five of them. Next we have Ms. Shelley Cantrell. We want to recognize some of our volunteers.
Thank you so very much. It's an honor for me to be here tonight to recognize a group of our snack program volunteers. And tonight, I would like to take this opportunity to call everybody up. And as I call your name, if you please come up, and you have to remain up here. You can't go back to your seat. You have to wait for your certificate, and you have to get your cupcake as your snack. So we're giving you a snack for all your thanks and for what you do. Just real quickly, I would like to, just for the audience here, just to give a quick capture of what this program has been able to do this year. 580 snack bags were served during the 2015-16 school year. Thirty-eight volunteers, four to six churches that are committed to donate monthly. We have some organizations, Amicola Garden Club, and we also have individual donators who donate throughout the year. Of course, this program does run basically on contributions. The program relies on money that is not committed every month, money. It's money that's, you know, basically comes in. So we are always asking for people to donate and try to keep this program running. The contributions, of course, can be sent to CARES. And I want to ask Fran, if Fran would come and stand, Fran Bishop, she will come and stand beside me. Fran is a special lady who actually helps to ensure that this program meets the food needs of the Pickens County students. The program is a coalition of churches, nonprofit organizations, and individuals who are interested in meeting the food needs. This is the fourth year that this program has been involved in making sure that our students in Pickens County receive the weekend food program, the snacks. So I would like to say, and over 50% now of our students are on the free reduced lunch, and this program has, of course, helped in that situation as well. So I want to give thanks to this very special lady who stands beside me. She is, as these people can attest, she is the person, the glue, that holds this program together. She sends out these emails. She says, "Okay, guys, here's the dates. This is where we're gonna be. This is what time you gotta be here." She keeps the program going. This lady, I can't say enough for her. She is, she has a star, so many stars in her crown. So I would like to go ahead and present Ms. Fran Bishop with, I always call her the flower. She brings sunshine. So she has a flower in here and a special little gift. And Ms. Fran, also somewhere down in here, I've got you some star chewing, Starburst chewing gum, because you are a star. So that's a special little token of my appreciation. I'm gonna ask Fran if she will stay up here with me. And if she would, I'm gonna let her give the certificates, help me out with these whenever we, whenever I call their name. I'm not sure if they're in. Okay. Susan Armstrong. We have a lot of people on vacation. George and Pat Mischke. And Tom. Tom's not able to be here, so. Milt Wilson. All right, this is just, just a special group of people, and I just want to say how much I have enjoyed being able to, to spend time with them and see them working and going to help volunteer, or some myself. It is such a rewarding devoted, I mean, the devotion that you can see every Monday, Wednesday, that these people, the time and energy that they give, I just can't say enough. And we just appreciate all of you so much, and we thank you for your blessings on our students, and we thank you, and ask that God bless you the way you bless our school system. Thank you for all you do. We gotta get, we gotta get a group picture.
First up will be the financial update.
I did not run them all off. This is our general fund as of June 3rd. We have collected 88.49% of our budgeted revenue. Keep in mind that when you're looking at these numbers, when it comes to revenue and expenditures, in the month of June, we actually run payrolls for June, July, and August, and receive revenue for those three months also. So the reason these numbers are a little bit low right now is we have quite a bit of activity that goes on. As you know, just to remind everybody, the payroll for a given fiscal year typically starts in September and runs through August of the next year, unless you're new to the system, and then it starts from August to August. So it's a lot of fun to try to keep up with. Twelve-month people are July to June. But quite a bit of the expenditures will not be seen until we run those end-of-the-month payrolls. We run them all between June 20th and June 28th. So please think about our payroll clerk and some of our department as we go into the next few weeks. We are not ignoring anyone, I promise, and we'll get every paycheck paid and every supplemental payroll done before the end of this month. It's a very, very busy time, but we'll get it all done. We've already got it laid out and mapped, and we've got everything ready to go. We've expended 73.63% of our budget expenditures. I also want to let you know, the Department of Audits, they were on-site with us for a little over four weeks. A little longer than normal, but we kind of had team members coming and going. They have, we have now been through the first review, and I believe there are two more now. Typically, we only have two. They've added one at the state level, so it may be quite a few weeks before we get the draft version of the audit back. Once it's to the point where I know they should be sending it to you, I'll try to give you a heads-up either in here or by email to know to look for the audit report. Typically, it will come by email, so whatever email you have given us to use consistently, that's the one we'll have it sent to. So, but I will let y'all know when I think they'll be coming out, because they always notify the board members.
Did you get my address changed, my email address changed with them? You know, mine did not come last year, my audit, because they had the wrong email address.
We gave them the one that I send stuff to you for. Do y'all have any questions on the general fund at this point? I'll jump to the SPOS update. In the month of May, we received $336,556.77 in SPOS revenue, earned interest of $971.98 in interest. That's not the right one. Y'all are seeing last month's.
Yeah. Yeah, what's that year? That was last month's general fund, too.
That's last month. Well, I'll go ahead and tell you about May, and we'll be glad to, I couldn't see that part. I can see most of that from here, but not all of it. We issued five checks for the month totaling $88,668.8 for various projects, including some technology purchases for Jasper Elementary, projectors for Jasper Elementary, solar shades at Tate Elementary, mini laptop carts at multiple locations, and one laptop for the technology department. At the end of May, our balance in our SPOS account is $4,679,730.82.
Were those the checks from last week?
Yes. All three of these reports are showing from last month, though. Okay. With the revenue we received, it was down just slightly, but our 12-month average is still holding, a little over $344,000, so we're pleased with that. We did budget for FY '17. We used the number $340,000 as our projected revenue for next year. So we'll continue to watch this as we go through FY '17. Remind you, too, at the end of this calendar year, in December, our SPOS IV ends. In January, we'll receive the last little bit of money from SPOS IV. Then SPOS V will begin, receive the first payment in February. The collections will start in January, but we'll get it in February. So just kind of remind y'all that we're coming to the end of this SPOS very quickly. Y'all have any questions? That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Amy. Next, we have our attendance update.
I'd like to congratulate Tate Elementary School on the highest attendance for the last, I want to say, 16 days of school. Sandy Layman, please come forward, and Mr. Corey Thompson, if you would please come with her. And, I'm sorry, I forgot the banners, under my chair. She gave it to me earlier, and I know Sandy's like, "She's got that banner." So 96.45%, if you guys will stand up front, and we want to get a picture. We want to give Corey honor of the last attendance award for Tate. Harmony's gonna get it next year. I would like to say that, looking at the enrollment it's been holding, also the dropouts, reporting '17, in the end of the year, reporting the student data, I just clarified to make sure with Patrick, but we were able to actually find a couple of students, so we actually are at 15. So I would like to make that, give you that good news, and so they're the same numbers we were last year. We had 15 dropouts in 2014-15, and 15 this year. So it's great when we always are able to find some of our students that are somewhere else, but at least they're receiving their education. So very happy, and I'd like to thank all, everybody. Again, it takes so many people working to make this happen. Now, if we could go to the staff attendance. Sandy Layman, would you please come back to the front, please? 98.12 for Tate. Congratulations. We left your certificate at the office. Sorry. Congratulations, Sandy. You can have, get your cupcake, Sandy. Apologize for that. But if you look at the, all of the attendance, I mean, it was great. 95% or above of all the schools, so, you know, I would like to say, that is awesome.
That is awesome.
Yeah, really good. So I'd like to applaud all the schools. That's the end of my report, unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Next, we have operations update.
Not a lot going on now. We don't do anything this summer around here. We are pretty swamped. We, I've got people running, David told me today, he said, "I didn't know we were doing this much this summer." But we're trying, we're painting, we're fixing everything we can, we're cleaning air-conditioning units. We're behind. PM preventative maintenance has been neglected a little, and we're trying to catch up. It's a struggle right now. This heat's, heat's killing us outside in the work. But our summer inspections will be going on soon. We'll be doing all the gym floors and all that stuff as the year goes on. We'll do most of them in September. Tate's floors will be done next weekend, the wood floors. We had a major hailstorm two weeks ago yesterday. If y'all remember that storm that came through. Didn't realize we had so much damage, but it destroyed the greenhouse. It's GSBA's insurance, people have been out, and it's $15,000 worth of damage. And they didn't flinch. They said, "We knew it would be." But we're gonna make one claim, so we only have one deductible, so it's gonna take a little bit of time to get all this done. We got 20 units on the, 20 rooftop units on the high school that were destroyed. I mean, it beat the fans in so bad, the coils will have to be replaced. Coils are pretty old. Some of those units are 20 years old. So it may be a fact that we have to stick a little bit of money when it changes the whole unit. They'll give us enough to do what we have to do, and they know that it's gonna cost a considerable amount of money. And they just said, "Get it all together, get it to us, we gotta get it taken care of." So they're really good workers, and I'm proud that we do have insurance with them. It did do some damage, Harmony, too, a little bit, but most of those can be repaired with what they call a comb, they comb the fans out. And so that'll be going good. It did destroy a roof on one of our portal units. We'll get a new roof on that. They're gonna pay for that, too. So it was a pretty substantial storm. I brought the video up, and it was bad. It was bad. You can tell exactly how it came, because the rooftop units, if they were facing this way in a certain way, they was, beat all the pieces. If it's turned a quarter of a turn, didn't have a ding on them. It was just, it was amazing. It was just, you could see the path right through there. We'll be, we'll be handling that soon, and we hope, you know, some of this work will probably be going on during school eventually, you know, over breaks and stuff, because these units are so old. Even if they do get us coils, they'll probably have to manufacture them. They're not gonna be sitting around, so. I'll let you know. I'll keep you updated on what's gonna go on. Transportation, we got training classes going on the 13th, 14th, and 15th, which is this week. It's over now. We had three people, I think one more may have come in late, so we might have had four, which is good. We had 10 signed up, only three showed up the first day, so maybe we did get to four. Technician workshop was last week, the bus inspection class, and it was at the same time the state messed up this year and ran them together, so we had to split crews going to these, and they brought the information back. The transportation department managers and directors will be at their conference in Jekyll Island next week. It's a very busy conference. They get a lot of information. It's a lot of good stuff, because a lot of the state rules and regulations are brought out then and changes and what's going on, so they'll have their hands full. We will have our safety, state safety meeting with the system, with our transportation department on June 11th, and I'll get you the timing a little better, you know, if you want to stop in, be at the high school probably, like we always do, and the state will be presenting and all that. SRO report, we had a couple arrests. Pickens High School had two, one drug, one drug distribution. Citations, four, juvenile complaints, three, and that's about all. We had one accident, I think, and with an injury at Dragon Drive. The summer meals program that Beth is doing with School Nutrition is really booming. I'll let her come up and give you an update on that, because you'll see how many kids we're feeding every day.
Hello, everybody. I was dragged up here, so. I put this together real quick for, if you want to go ahead and view the slideshow, enable it, Amy, and then view slideshow. There's no music or anything fancy with it, it's just a few slides to show you what's going on, but. Hit view, go to view, there you go. That it? All right, so this is 2016 Summer Meals Program that School Nutrition Department's providing. You can go to the next slide. We have four sites that we're providing meals at. Boys and Girls Club, Park and Rec, the football team, and we're eating at the cafeteria there, and then Mountain Head across the, well, right here, actually. All right. We started June 1st, and we'll run through July 28th, which is a Thursday. We're not running all the way to July 29th, but it's right before school starts. Daily, we're feeding about 350 students lunch and about another 200 a day for snacks. And, so I thought I would just go behind the scenes and show you what we're doing. And we have an army of about two people, three, when I'm there. So we're cranking it out, but we prep it every day. We pack it up. That's about 500 meals there packed up. And then we load it up onto trucks for delivery. And then we set it up at the site, get organized, and then we serve it. And there's a line of kids coming through, getting their snack lunches. This happened to be just a few days ago at Pickens High School, and I'm sure Coach Parker will tell you about it, but they hosted a football camp, so we went ahead and fed the guys for that. So, and here they are, eating, which is always a good set. And for all those boys, go to the next slide, you'll see, it was a full house. There was about 400 athletes in there. And then I don't know how many coaches, probably 30 or so, and then us. But it was a very quiet room, because they were very tired after being on the field, and they were eating, so it was good. And then, we're never done. Then we have to clean up, pack up, return all the coolers, and get ready to repeat it the next day. And this is just kind of a glimpse of, once we're bringing everything back, we're preparing the food at Pickens Middle School, and we just kind of, we're very cramped there. We just kind of set everything there and get ready for the next day. And I just couldn't resist but just show you a picture of Pickens County's finest, school nutrition staff. So this was taken the last week of school, and I just got a quick picture from each of the schools with most of their staff. A lot of them weren't in the photo there, but I just wanted to say, it is our pleasure to be able to provide the meals to the kids in Pickens County schools, so thank you for the opportunity. Any questions? We have a system going. It's pretty good.
Two people?
Two people, well, and me. I'm the third, I'm the third wheel, so. Yeah. But it's, it's going well. And at the camp, we fed about another 800 kids this week alone, on top of the 350 a day, so it was crazy, but it's behind us, so.
Does Mountain Head meet during the daytime in the summer?
No, we actually take their food to them during the day, and then they feed them like at 6:00 o'clock at night. But they have refrigeration to store the food, and they have microwaves to heat up the food. Right. So, and we feed maybe 50 kids or so there. We do have some, you know, things that we have to work around. They have a student attending right now for makeup work that has a peanut allergy, and so normally, the kids at MEC during the year, they love the peanut butter and jelly, but we're not sending those every day, because, and so the kids are kind of like, "We really want it." So, but we have a really severe peanut allergy there, so we can't send that. But we work with everybody the best we can, so. It's fun.
You should get a cupcake.
I'll pass.
I can't say enough about Beth. She's, she works tirelessly. She, she, every day is at one school, either working the line, or taking up money, or, I mean, we have such a, it's hard to keep people in nutrition and transportation, and the turnover has been really hard on her this year, and so, I'm telling you, we got a gym. She makes it happen, and I don't know how she does it. I don't know how they fix that many meals with three people. I just, I appreciate it, I really do. She's, she don't give me any. It's all on the update.
Does she need to leave and go get started over?
No, I did mention, Friday's a light day. We only feed two sites on Friday. So we're already pressed.
Oh, so you can wait till after midnight to go get started? That's amazing.
Any questions? That item that you see there, information on buses, that was last month's, and Amy and I still have to sit down. We're trying to see what money we got left, you know, before we can designate. That's, we kind of left it, so we hold the place for next month, and we really don't, we really can't tell you now exactly where it's coming from. Some from Flos, some from Indian Fund and stuff like that. There you go. I'll be back. Y'all get tired of eating now.
All right, and next on the agenda is the action items. First one is approval of the tentative budget. We've had four questions on the budget. I will hear a motion, because this is the tentative budget waiting on final numbers from the county.
Can I give a little information on the new regs as to budget approval? I know y'all heard when you were training last week, there are new procedures that go in place July 1st. If y'all have final budget in place on July 1st, and we're at this point, just like we just have our tentative, then you have to have public hearings or public meetings. I did talk to a representative with Financial Review at the DOE, and I know, one of y'all came back and told me, "Oh, they told us at our GSBA conference, what we've done would meet the requirements." Well, you know me, I have to call anyway. And I went through 140 pages of training, too, in the last two weeks. Did speak with the representative of Financial Review. The meetings that we had do meet the requirements of the new legislation, so even if we wait until July to do our final approval, we have met the requirements of what they are now going. of what they are now. Next year, we will call public hearings. We've been calling them budget workshops or budget committee. We will need to call them budget hearings next year. But I did go through it actually with the super, well, with an individual and then with her supervisor, too. So, we're good to go on that. We actually had talked about trying to come back before we get the digest and go on ahead and do a final approval. We don't have to do that. We have met the requirements. So, that's, if you want to do the final, we can do it at a later date. But we can wait for the digest either way. So, I just want y'all to know that we have met the requirements and the letter of the law.
Okay, so I'll hear a motion to approve the tentative budget.
I'd like a motion that we approve the FY '17.
I said, um...
Motion in a second. Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I'll make a comment. I'm gonna vote on the budget. The way the budget is set up is not broken down and we don't vote on sections. We vote on entire budget. So, if there's parts that you disagree with, you either vote against the whole thing or you vote for, you vote against it or for all of it. So, my vote, which will be against it, is more of against a very small amount that I'm in disagreement with and not the overwhelming majority that I do.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Three. All those against? Two. Next on the action items is vacation days. Amy speak to us about that just.
This is an item that we, an employee that this involves actually came to me with a concern. This is a policy, part of a policy that was put in place in July of 2000. Prior to July of 2000, any 12-month employee who earned vacation time, if they did not use it by June 30th of that fiscal year, they could roll it over. They called it banking vacation. In July of 2000, the board decided to do away with that policy because it does become a liability issue. When you have a large number of employees who can bank these days, we actually have to report it at the end of the year as a liability on our books because the policy also says if they leave us, by whatever means, by termination, by retirement, if they resign, or if they pass away, you still have to pay for the vacation days. A change in the policy could do away with them. And that's the point that's an employee brought to me and said that they were concerned about, you know, in the future, what if, what if. We are down, we used to have, when I first started dealing with this, this actually came about right before I started working here. We probably had about 30 employees that were in this. And it was a large amount of money. We are down to three. I've spoken with all three of them. They are all fine if we want to pay them. So, that is what I had gone to Dr. Perry and asked is, is there a way that we could go ahead and pay these people for their days? We will pay them anyway at some point. Paying them now could be a little cheaper for the system. They are all willing to accept the payment. And we have the money in the budget currently, so if we did this, I would like to issue the checks before, or by June 30th. All three of them seem to be very pleased with it. One has the brunt of the monies out there. There is one that has quite 103 and 1/2 of the days out there. The other two have, I believe it's 25 and 1/2 and 15. But I would like to ask for your consideration in approving this payment. Talked to Mr. Landrum. Because it is in policy, the resolution that you have in front of you needs to be approved. And that would give Dr. Perry the authority to allow, you know, to direct me to make the payment to these three employees.
And this would basically get it off the books and make it where you're not having to account for it every year.
Right.
Then you'd be able to remove the policy?
The majority of the policy actually has to do with regular vacation time. There are two little sections there about this. I believe we would come back at a later date and amend the policy and remove the two. It's, I believe it's about three lines that, in two sections that need to be removed. But I would want Mr. Landrum to tweak that policy so the wording is proper. But we would take that out of the language because then we would have no employees in the system who have bank days.
I worked on drafting the resolution and then sent it to Phil. And he makes a lot of changes in it. So, what you see here is the final version of what he approved.
Make a move that we approve the revolution, the resolution to remove the, to pay the unused vacation times.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five of them. Next on the action items is the purchase of the White Fleet. So, you're back again?
This is, we talked about this in our budget work sessions. We're looking at purchasing a pickup and a cargo van for maintenance and trans, one truck will be transferred into transportation for, to do away with a 80 model military surplus vehicle that's on its last legs. But the truck we would be transferring, it has 150,000 miles on it. So, but it's a pretty good truck. It's in good shape. But I'm wait, I've gotten prices from, I actually went three places, but one of them had nothing to do with trucks and their local dealers. I got, the prices are within hundreds of dollars of each other. I mean, they're all really good prices. The people work well with us. They all own a business and I appreciate them working with me. I've been back to them two or three times. My recommendation would be to stay with a GM product. And the only reason is because every tech I have in transportation is certified in GM products. We can eventually move someone into some training for a different product, a different fleet type vehicle, a Ford or a Dodge or a Jeep or a Cherokee or whatever. But at this time, I would like to recommend we stay with that product since the prices are just identical, basically. And that's what I'm recommending on this. And it's, the reason I put 61,000 is there's, we're working on, there's a tax, tag tax that we're not 100% sure whether we gotta pay or not. It's, okay, okay. So, it'll be 60,000, $17, basically, for both vehicles, for both of them. But that's what I'm recommending on that one. Any questions?
Hear a motion on purchasing the White Fleet vehicles?
I make a motion we purchase the White Fleet cargo van pickup. At a cost of 60,000.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Second.
Second one, Mr. Bell. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five of them. Thank you. Just stay there.
I can't see.
Tape roofing.
Tape roofing. What, the small, the short building next to the main building and then the building on down to the gym and all, that's building 230 and 231, or 2030 and 2031. They are the oldest to have nothing done to the roof. The gutter system is failing miserably. The walkway going in, the canopy for the walkway to the parking lot was rotted. We've already done that in-house. We've replaced all that, fixed that in-house. But what I wanted to do is take some money from Splosh that we had allocated last year to do the paving at JMS. And I did some things in-house. And so, we really don't want to spend a bunch of money if we're gonna not have a school there in a couple of years, three years, whatever we do. Didn't want to put a lot of money in the paving. And I did some patching. So, we've got enough money left there that we could do this roofing. It will not exceed 55,000, but it's around right now about 46 or so. But I want to do the back gutters. They weren't in the pricing. And I just want to get it all completed. So, this roof will have a 10-year warranty, just like any roof you put on. And this guy does really good work. He's been doing our school roofing. I've been impressed to find him. That's what I'm wanting to do with that person right there.
Is it gonna stay a flat roof?
Yeah, it's that flat roof. But he'll be spraying and coating it. He's already pressure washed it because it was so bad, we had to start finding leaks. And I decided that we got this money here that I did not use if we could just reallocate it. That would help me out.
You did a motion in there? I make a motion that we approve the money for the tape roofing.
Second one, Mr. Long. All those in favor? Five of them. Next, we have the garbage and recycling services.
The three-year cycle was up on garbage pest control and landscaping. We usually do one-year contracts, but we'll get pricing for like three-year terms. And if the pricing doesn't change and we're satisfied with their service, then we'll just re-up the contract. That's what, I actually bid it this time because the three-year cycle was up on this one. I did no landscaping because we changed some things, the way they're doing some things. You know, the high school field went down south on us. And I revamped and put the efforts towards some other things. And so, I want to keep theirs the same. We'll get to that in just a second. But the garbage and recycling, I'm recommending advanced disposal. It did go up a little bit. It wasn't terrible. It's still under our budgeted numbers. It's been going on for years. They're kinda hard to beat. They're about a one sole source around here now because they own their own landfills. But I feel good with it. They came in a little high and I went back to them and tweaked a couple of things and argued with them a little bit and they came down. So, I feel good about this price.
Okay. Hear a motion on the, accepting the bid for the garbage and recycling services?
Y'all make a motion that we accept this proposal for our garbage recycling services debt.
I'll second. All those in favor? Five of them.
The next one is the lawn maintenance. And I tell you, my, I guess I dropped the ball a little bit. I'd like to re-up it one more year. We're not gonna beat this price. I'm scared if we do bid it right now, it's gonna go crazy on us. And they're willing to re-up it one more year. But I want to do some more detailed research on what they're doing, what they're not doing, and what we're requiring of them. I've read the, I've read the old RFP and I've read their contract and I understand a little bit. But I think I can change some things and tweak some things. So, I want to put a different bid package together for this next year and do some things a little different for them. And if we can re-up it this year to get us through the year, the price is the same. And they do a pretty good job. It's not bad. I don't know how they do it for what they're doing it for. That's what I'm recommending there, is just to re-up that contract. You're seeing a copy of the old ones, what you're seeing. I just didn't make a new one film. I'll have to write something up here to get them to sign. It's a tidwell lawn curate.
How often do they cut the schools?
Every week.
Every week?
Every week. They just about have to. You can't hardly skip a week.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we re-up the lawn maintenance contract for one year.
Second. Second one, Mr. Bell. All those in favor? Five of them.
And I said tidwell with tid.
With tid, yeah. Next is our exterminating the pest control.
Alright, this is, I'm recommending when you're exterminating, I revamped this and you can see in your packet, there's pretty detailed RFP we put out on this. And there's a checklist at the end they have to do that I think really helps. We get some good service out of this. It's worked for me in the past and I feel comfortable with it. I changed, I revamped it in the way that, we were only treating cafeterias, which is good. But you're not gonna stop pests and rodents and bugs if you don't treat the entire school. So, I put it out to do the entire school. We do every building on the campus. We do the concession stands. We do the filled house. We do the pole barns. They do it all. And they do it once a month. And they have a log at each location. And anybody has a problem, they write their note in the log. If it's an emergency, they can call in. Unlimited trips back. It's $300 a month more than we were paying. It's $800 a month. And they do a good job. I had this company at my, in Dawson Kenny when I was there, a long time ago. They hadn't had it in the last 10 years because they got beat in some pricing. But I know the reputation. I know they're good. And I know they can do it. So, I highly recommend them. I think we'll get a handle on some of this stuff.
I'll make a motion that we approve linear exterminating services contract for next year. Second one, Ms. Lewis. All those in favor? Five of them. Now, we need to talk about a little moisture barrier.
Told y'all it's gonna get tired of me. Alright, we have a moisture barrier problem. Brake in the slab in the upper level of Jasper Elementary School. Our glue for the VCT flooring is never drying. It's stained with, it's leaching through. We have done, we have stripped and waxed these floors just to make sure that it wasn't a problem of that from last summer's work. There's a moisture barrier problem. We narrowed it down to the upper level. To fix it, we have to remove everything. We have to remove the glue. We have to sand the floor. We have to put Aquaphen. And then we have to retest it. Our moisture was 99.9%. It's the highest they can read. And that's what it read. It read higher than that. They don't know what it really is. So, the only way we're ever gonna afford to stay there is to put this Aquaphen on. And this is what I'm recommending. And the reason I'm doing it through a construction manager is we get a real two warranties here. I got some paperwork from Southern Andy and from a couple of other people saying that they tried to do this before and we didn't have time, didn't have the money to do it. That they just went ahead and put the floor down because they were told to. So, this will remedy our problem. I think you've actually put this down before, haven't you, Dr. Perry? You know, some's good. So, it does work.
Yeah, we had a good bad cone on the barn. We recorded a million dollars. We did the floor. And we put the moisture barrier down and never had a problem with it.
Is this in every classroom, in the hallway?
On that upper level, the entire section. There's, actually, there were two classrooms that weren't really bad because they're over, there's a crawl space under part of it. And it wasn't real bad. But I don't want to take that chance. If we're gonna do that upper level, those two classrooms, do the whole thing and get this straightened out. And honestly, I didn't feel like I had the manpower and the time to empty these classrooms, put everything back. So, I made them put some money in to do all that. So, we can, this has gotta happen in quickly, but it's got to have time to dry. And I've gotta have it organized to the point where if I'm building walls somewhere else, I couldn't get here and do it. So, I wanted it all in the contract. So, we got it all done as quickly and efficiently as we could. And that's why it's, the contract you see there is actually 75,800. But I did, I put them not to exceed 80 because what if I get in there and break a water pipe or something? I gotta have a little something where I don't have to come back to y'all to get more money just to finish up right in the middle of it. So, that's what I'm recommending.
We must be done. Must be finished before school.
It'll start next week if we get approved. And it will be done before school starts. That's why I've got to get going on this one.
And they're gonna move everything for you and put it back?
Yep. They're gonna put pods outside the end out there and store it.
That's a good deal. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with, what is that, Triple Lake?
Charles Black.
Oh, with Charles Black and then he, okay.
And he, yeah.
And then he done, okay. But Charles Black to, we forgot what I'm doing, to approve the moisture barrier installation at Jasper Elementary.
Second.
Second one, Mr. Bell. All those in favor? Five of them.
We want to make sure that this has time to cure prior to putting the wax, the wax down.
Dr. Perry, I'll be on this one because you ain't getting me. I promise. I'll be watching this one.
Okay, we, stopping water to sprinklers.
Many moons ago, they recalled these sprinklers at the high school sprinkler heads. When I came in last summer and we were doing our summer inspections, the fire marshal came to me and said, these were supposed to have been changed. We need them changed. They've got to be done. Said, I don't know when this all happened and when it all came about and who was here or anything else. But I know at one time they recalled many moons ago. Never got fixed. He said he's not gonna pass us inspection if we don't get them changed. So, I started last year pricing this. And I actually called them back three weeks ago and said, look at your price. Is it still good? Is it changed? I need to take this to board and see if they're willing to do it. to board and see if they're willing to do it. And it was still good, and they're willing to do it, and they can get it done in a couple of weeks, so, yeah, we, we need to, we need to do this. I'd hate for something to happen, let's have a sprinkler didn't go off, you know.
What do you know about this company?
Cliffs, they've been doing work here for years.
Yeah, long time.
Yeah, they're a good company.
It's actually one of the only ones around.
They're the only ones that would even do, nobody else wanted to touch it, they wanted to change everything in. He's willing to drain the system, clean the system, put you heads in. It would've probably been 300,000 if we'd gone a different direction.
Bad experience again with the installation of sprinkler systems like this.
We worked with the state, put one company out of business because of, they did such
a poor job in one of our schools, so I just wonder what your, your experience is with Cliffs?
Yeah, they're.
They've been around, if they're reputable?
Yes, very.
Because you have to, you know, you have to do it just right, you have to center it, put it in the right place so that it covers the area it's supposed to cover, and...
Well, now, if something's been recalled, if it had been...
That's what I was telling you.
If it been done.
If it been done, we wouldn't have this call, right?
If it had the attention put to it then, they'd pay for it.
Right, that's what I was thinking. I'm thinking this is ridiculous that it's not.
And it's out of.
That it's not been done.
Yeah. I hate it, I tried, but they just laughed at me.
I bet they did.
I'll make a motion that we approve the replacement of the composting bins in high school. I'll second. All those in favor? Five of them.
This was in that Splosh budget meeting we talked about too, I had all this stuff.
That's yours. You can explain.
Oh, this is, this shouldn't be a surprise to you as well, but this was part of my budget that I submitted, and this is for a meal price increase, 10 cents for student at elementary, middle, and high.
Are we getting closer to being where we're supposed to be?
10 cents?
Not really.
No?
Because the bogey keeps going up, but the max I have to increase a year is 10 cents, so.
This is state mandate.
It's federal. It's bigger than that.
No, it's federal, okay.
So, any questions?
We're not the only one.
We're not the only one, and we are not the highest price, price out there, we aren't the lowest.
We're not the only, I guess, but we're not the only ones experiencing this.
Right, right, so.
For the high school, we have it during the school.
No.
It's still a bargain, though.
It is a bargain.
You can't, I mean, you know, you couldn't beat your own kid for that.
I think so, I mean, it's, it costs about $3 to produce a meal right now, $3, $3.05, so it's intended for the meal price to cover the cost of the meal.
That's what we done, but it is still a bargain.
Right.
Well, it's a shame that they won't let us charge what we need to charge to cover their costs. It's a shame that you can't set the price that it's being dictated.
But we are excited that they allow for kids free and reduced meals for those children and those families that need the assistance.
Right, so, and again, the whole program's designed so that, you know, the free and reduced program isn't subsidizing the rest of the kids, but the meal's already subsidized, so even though a full-priced student, it would be higher if the federal government wasn't subsidizing part of, subsidizing part of that meal, so, anyway.
Just do me a favor.
What's that?
Don't turn a kid away, beat every one of them.
Understood, understood.
Now you can.
I make a motion that we approve the increase in student lunches for next year of 10 cents. It's 10 cents cross-boarded.
I'll second. All those in favor? Five of them.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna see Ms. Cantrell again.
We're busy little bees tonight. This was the fourth year that we've utilized on Besmond, and I'm asking for your approval to, for the contract for the 2016-17 school year. Looking at the information that you have, we're able to hold the contract agreement amount, same as last year, and in previous years, there was a yearly gradual increase, so I was able to negotiate with them to give us, to hold it for the next three years, even though this is a yearly contract agreement. So I am very happy to report that to you, that we do have a three-year holding same amount, which is good, but this is, this is a yearly contract that you're voting on.
And Mr. Landrum has reviewed this contract for us, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Besmond contract for next year. Second. Second by Mr. Bell. All those in favor? Five of them.
And just briefly, I would like to update you, I know it's not on the agenda, but the code of conduct, we already made the final additions edits today. Again, thanks to Beth, Beth's been helping me, and I can't thank her enough for her help. We're looking at hopefully getting this to the printer by the end of the month, we're still in the editing process, so board members, if you have anything that you'd like to still submit to us, or any questions, please feel free to contact me.
And it is on our website?
Yes, it is on our website.
It's on our website for parents and the community to review.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we have the approval of minutes for May 6, 12, and June 3, board meetings. I make a motion that we approve those minutes as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the May 6 call board meeting, May 12 regular board meeting, and June 3 call board meeting.
I have a motion. Second by Ms. Lewis. All those in favor? Five of them. Next we have surplus from almost every school.
She tipped it out.
I hear a motion.
Technology and some of her Title I stuff, and it's just a combination.
Right, yes, it's like all over.
Make a motion that we approve the surplus as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Five of them.
And encouragement, any of these materials, these books that can be utilized by students, we'd like to give them to, and to take home and use.
Next I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the employment, employment compensation, hiring, or disciplinary action or dismissal or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, and to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought, or to be brought by or against a school district or an officer or employee, or which an officer or employee may be directly involved. Second by Mr. Long. All those in favor? Five of them. 8:29, I made a motion to end executive session, and it was second by Mr. Bell, and no action was taken. I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes as read. Second. Second by Mr. Long. All those in favor? Five of them. Next on the agenda is approval of personnel.
I make a motion we approve personnel action report as presented.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bell. All those in favor? Five of them. Next on the agenda is board comments.
Can I say something?
You may say something.
Yes, I just want to say congratulations to Anthony Walker, our new principal for Jasper Elementary. I, I met with the school advisory council, and they also support that recommendation, so they were very complimentary of the work that you've done there, so congratulations, and we wish you the very best. And we do have a media release that will be going out now?
They are out.
They have it. Yep.
Second.
Well, congratulations, Ms. Walker. I know you'll do well.
Sure.
Need a motion? I make a motion.
Motion to adjourn from Mr. Long. I'll second that. All those in favor? Five of them. Have a good evening.